I'd like to call the meeting of July 10, 2025, to order. We have any special intentions? Mayor?
Yes. Yesterday was the 43rd anniversary of Pan Am 759 crash year in Kenner. As everyone knows, it was a catastrophic event that kind of changed the landscape of that neighborhood. It affected a lot of people that still live in Kenner. The only good thing that came out of it was the advancement of the windshield detection equipment. That probably saved a lot, many, many lives since that terrible day here in Kenner. Just like to keep the victims and families in our prayers.
Thank you. Anybody else? And I would also like to mention that in Texas, as of yesterday, there were 120 deaths, 170 people are still missing, and as a result of the flash floods. The area encompasses six Texas central area counties. Also, there were three reported deaths in New Mexico as a result of flash floods. Please keep Texas, New Mexico flood victims and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman McKinney, if you would lead us in prayer?
Please rise and bow your heads. Lord God, thank you for this day and the opportunity to come together to make impactful decisions for our community and work together for the best of Kenner. On this day, give us direction, fortitude, and grace to deal with anything that may lay ahead. May we seek your guidance and work steadfastly in your name. Also ask for prayers for the flood victims and families, families of the victims of Texas, New Mexico, and North Carolina. And also prayer, continued prayers to the Kenner plane crash victims' families and all of those impacted so many years ago. Amen.
Chief Conley, if you can lead us in the pledge, please.
Sure. Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
With council resolution number B 14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor?
I guess in honor of your first meeting, I'm going to have probably the longest mayor's committee I've had in three years, but it's a lot of projects and some announcements and what's going on here in Kenner. The total reconstruction of Roosevelt Boulevard between West Metta and West Napoleon is scheduled to begin next month. We're finalizing an informational paper now to distribute to the residents in the area, probably within the next two weeks, informing them what's going to take place. We do know that's going to be a major inconvenience for that neighborhood, but this is long overdue. I'm also happy to announce that two roadway projects that we have coming through the Regional Planning Commission, the bid dates have been moved up. Normally, this is a two- to three-year in advance planning thing about roadways, and I don't know if it's Jose constantly on them, or is it just lucky that we have things ready to move? But the overlay of Veterans Boulevard between Williams Boulevard and Roosevelt Boulevard and the overlay of Loyola Drive from around 30th Street to the East and West Loyola interchange will be put out for bid probably before the end of the year. That means that construction or the overlays will take place hopefully by the second quarter of the new year. Also, this week, I signed an agreement with an engineering firm to redesign the air-conditioned system at Fire Station 37 that, in my opinion, has been flawed since its construction. A new design will address the problems of that station. With the problems of that station, the station has been temporarily closed until the new design and repairs are made, and the two fire trucks were relocated to nearby stations along with the personnel. Agenda items 15 C and D today, you're going to be approving the purchase of a new fire pumper. This new pumper, along with the previously ordered rescue pumper, should be delivered around the end of this year. So we get two new big pieces of equipment. And shortly after that, I believe, I don't know what a quint is, but according to Jason Dyer, that's the next piece of equipment that needs to happen. So we're ordering that. And sticking with the fire department, a traffic preemption system is in place along Williams Boulevard. This system turns the traffic signals green along the route of travel for the fire trucks. Thereby, it significantly reduces our response times to south of I-10. It should increase the response time through the I-10 interchange. So I do believe we have, the chiefs have a demonstration tomorrow with area chiefs, because I know some of, it's already in place in some parts of Jefferson Parish and may not be totally used at this point, but will, in Kenner, it's going to be put to use probably every time a fire truck goes southbound on Williams. All right. We have expanded the hours of operation of the free AP Clay Splash Park to include Wednesdays and Thursdays. The current hours are Wednesday and Thursday from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Fridays, 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sundays, 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And what we're doing, we're monitoring the amount of kids that come to play. In the next summer, we'll have to adjust the hours. We'll have a pretty good base of what happened this summer. Also, tomorrow, Friday, July 11, and the remaining Friday nights in July, Kenner Planetarium will host Late Night Laser. Each night, we'll have three different laser shows synced to music. The shows are at 7:00 p.m., 8:00 p.m., and 9:00 p.m. The ticket office opens at 6:30 p.m. on Fridays, and it costs $5 a person. Our website has all the music it plays each night at each time. So also, I'd like to remind residents that the 2025 City of Kenner Hurricane Preparedness Guide is still available on the city's website. It's a 32-page guide that'll help anyone have a personal plan, city resources. It's actually very good. I print it out because when the computers go down, we can still grab it. And I guess this will make Councilman Joey Lahat the happiest man in the room today. We're happy to announce that the process for golf cart registration in the City of Kenner has been finalized. Golf cart inspection and registration will be held by Kenner Police at the Lighthouse Substation Mondays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on no holidays. You must schedule an appointment, and the registration fee is $75 per golf cart per year. On our website, you can sign up for an inspection, and it should tell you everything you need, and Chief Conley's guys will take care of you. Also, this Saturday, July 12, we'll be hosting a free back-to-school giveaway at MLK Resource Center from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. until the supplies run out. I'd like to thank Ashner for sponsoring this event. Last year was very successful, and they run out quick, so get there early. And Kenner Recreation continues to expand its programming for all ages. Here are a few important registration dates to note. This Saturday, Kenner Recreation will hold a free, all-inclusive tennis clinic at Lincoln Management from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This opportunity is available, this opportunity is available to all ages and abilities. Cheer registration to open July 1st and will begin at the end of this month. We're offering both elite cheerleading and sideline cheerleading programs. Gates open at 7:00 p.m., and showtime is at 7:30. If you need more details on any of that, you can see, check out our website and get it. Save the date for the City of Kenner's Fourth Annual Food Truck Festival is Sunday, November 16, in Lake Town. We picked a date where the Saints don't play, so we don't go up against hometown football. So we're excited to bring back one of the most successful events we have in the City of Kenner. I think we kind of took a dip in the lineup this year because opening man is going to be Amber Drive, which includes Councilman Lahat's son. Now, it's a pretty good lineup. Amber Drive, The Wise Guys, Rock Show, NOLA, and Timothy Wayne, who is the nephew of Tim McGraw. So he put a pretty good show on here at our Italian Festival and wanted to come back. And council members, listen up. Our food truck fest sponsorship opportunities are available now, so you can send money to sponsor the food truck festival. And more importantly, the applications for vendors will be open, will open Wednesday, July 16. It normally, we normally have to limit the food trucks to around 35 because it's, it's very popular and it books up fast. So the 16th of July, vendors can secure their spots, and that's it.
Yes, sir. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, Approval of Minutes, regular council meeting of June 20, 2025. Item 2 is Approval of Alcoholic Beverage Permit Applications. We have none. Item 3 is Approval of Bingo and Public Gathering Applications. Item 3A is Application Number 2468-25, Down Syndrome Association of Greater New Orleans to Hold a Public Gathering on November 8, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. for the purpose of a Down Syndrome Walk at Lake Town in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3B is Application Number 2466-25, New Orleans Track Club to Hold a Public Gathering on December 13, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for the purpose of a Marathon at Rivertown Heritage Park, 2015, 4th Street in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3C is Application Number 2471-25, Kanita Dubus Bailey to Hold a Public Gathering on July 19, 2025, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of a Family Reunion at Veterans Park, 1900 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Willmott, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 8, Public Hearings, and final passage, we have none. Item 9 is Ordinances for the Sale, Purchase, Transfer, Lease, and/or Alienation of Immovable Property. We have none. Item 10 is Opening of Bids. We have none. Item 11 is Reclassification of Zoning for Final Passage. Item 11A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,845, an ordinance amending ordinance 11,062 adopted March 17, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending Section 6.09, multi-family residential district to add rear yard setbacks. Section 6.10, commercial districts to remove trade service establishments from the permitted uses in the C1 neighborhood commercial district, and to remove gas stations from the permitted uses in the C2 general commercial district, and to make gas stations a conditional use in the C2 general commercial district. Section 6.11, industrial districts to add trade service establishments as a permitted use in the SI special industrial district. Section 6.13, Rivertown Historic District, Figure 6-1, Rivertown Historic District, to update the district boundary. Section 7.04, required off-street motor vehicle and bicycle parking spaces. Table 7-1, off-street parking requirements, to revise the minimum required vehicle spaces for places of worship. Section 11.04, permanent signs to add regulations for window signs. And Section 12.05, yard regulations to exclude uncovered front steps and handicap ramps from setback requirements in certain cases. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, to open the public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All council members opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. I believe we have a presentation from the planning department.
Mr. Slouenski?
Good evening, everyone. Despite the lengthy caption, this is actually fairly straightforward. These are mostly housekeeping changes. I don't think any of them will have any great effect. There's basically four reasons for these changes. Some of them are errors that were introduced when we transitioned from the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to the UDC Unified Development Code in 2016. Some of them are to protect the visual aesthetic of the city's major commercial corridors. Some of them are just to clarify language, to make it easier to understand, and some of them are to make special exceptions for instances that may place an undue burden on some of our citizens. There are basically seven changes. So the first change is to add rear yard setbacks to the RMF Multi-Family Residential Zoning I recently, a couple months ago, met with someone who is interested in rezoning some property to multi-family residential, and in, during that discussion, I noticed that there was no rear yard setback. I went back to the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance that the UDC replaced, and there was a rear yard setback. So I compared the setbacks for the side yards and the front yards, and they were all the same, so I'm just adding back in the rear yard setback.
Would you, would you like questions after each one, or wait to the end? It's your call.
We can do it after each one if that's, that would be easier.
That'd be good.
So, and the only one thing I would say about this first one is that all the multifamily zoned property in the city is already developed, so this is just heading off any future problems.
Do we have any questions regarding the first one, rear yard setbacks?
I do not, yes.
I have one or two. If you will, just, just let us know specifically in the public know what this impacts, the rear yard setbacks, that we're, it's not having, you're not coming in with, with anything new that's going to make any thing on behalf of the city want, have to inspect and so forth on the, on everybody's backyards or anything of that nature?
No, no. This is just for multifamily developments in the future, if there are ever any. It just dictates how far the back of the building needs to be from the rear property line. That's all it does.
Okay.
And only in this one zoning district.
I just, this, this one kind of concerns me a little bit, not necessarily about what it says, but in the past, we had a front yard setback dealing with boats, and it was a major, major deal back in 2016, 2017. I remember it very well, and we had a lot of people that were very upset because of the changes that occurred at that time. Now, this is rear yard setbacks, and it has nothing to do with those types of things, correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Explain it again, what it does have to do with, as far as, it's from 15 to 25 yards?
I would have to check the specific language, but the rear yard setback was missing from the UDC, so I'm just bringing over the one from the CZO as it matches. It's not less than 20 feet.
Not less than 20 feet, okay.
Yeah, so if someone were to rezone some property and build an apartment complex, the rear yard, the building would have to be 20 feet from the rear property line.
Okay. And in your opinion, this is all just reasonable changes that's necessary for the rear yard?
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's not going to affect anything that currently exists. It's just to cut off any future problems should someone decide to try to rezone property to multifamily in the future.
Okay. If you will, I don't think anybody else has any other questions regarding this one. If you go to the next one, thank you.
Okay. So the second one, so we have various uses that are defined within the UDC, and one of them is trade service establishments, and it is for things like HVAC installers, electricians, plumbers, that sort of thing. But we also have something called a contractor, and it also mentions plumbers and electricians, but it also gets into like, you know, companies like Command Construction that would do, you know, build roads or util, you know, underground utilities. So they're, they tend to overlap, and in the UDC, we had trade service establishments allowed in both the C1 and the C2 commercial zoning districts. So we're talking about Williams Boulevard, West Esplanade, all these areas where we have commercial zoning. So we were essentially, you know, telling, let me step back. Contractors are only allowed in the special industrial zoning district and the more, the other industrial zoning district. So it was kind of contradictory to allow plumbers and electricians to be in industrial districts, but also in C1 commercial. And so we went back again to the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and discovered that, at that time, trade service establishments were only allowed in the industrial zoning districts. So we went ahead and made the change to put it back like that so that we don't have contractors in our commercial corridors. That, that is essentially what that change does.
Anybody have any questions on this one? No? If you go to the next change, please. Thank you.
Okay. Change number three, update the figure in the UDC showing the boundary of the Rivertown Historic District. This one's easy. Back in 2023, we did, under Mr. Dufour, we made a change to the historic district boundary. We brought it in on the east and west sides, and we changed the text description of what the boundary was, but we failed to update the figure. So this is just replacing the figure that shows, you know, it's a little map that shows what the boundary is. That's all we're doing here.
Okay. Next, next change?
Changes to the parking requirements for places of worship. Again, this is a change that happened in the transition from the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to the UDC. I don't have, I think I have the definitions in front of me, but the point is, is that we had some cases in the last couple of years where we had very small churches, and when we were determining the parking, it didn't seem out of line because they were very small. But now, we eventually ended up meeting with someone who wanted to build a larger church, and that's when we noticed that the parking requirement was really kind of out of control. I mean, this one particular church was going to need nearly 800 parking spots, and that just seemed ridiculous. So again, we went back to the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, and someone in the transition, someone changed the language from one space for every 60 square feet in the main auditorium to one space for every 60 square feet gross floor area. So if the church had a cafeteria or classrooms, they had to provide parking for all of that instead of just, you know, the sanctuary or the main auditorium. And I went ahead and compared that, you know, last year, and found that we had the highest parking requirement for churches that I could find anywhere. It was just off the chart. We were at least double of everywhere else. So we are just putting it back to what it was under the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, which is actually very common, I found, for communities regionally and nationally. So that's all that one's doing.
Anybody have any questions on this? Next one, please.
Okay. Change number five. This was one that came out of the study that I presented earlier this year. This is just making gas stations a conditional use in the C2 zoning district. That way, they would have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission to get a conditional use, and then before y'all to get approval before a gas station could be built in the C2 zoning district. And again, we're primarily talking about Williams, West Esplanade, you know, the major commercial corridors.
Yeah. Councilman Lahat?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. This, this was something that came out of constituents complaining about this issue that leads to my district to stop Williams and other corridors from becoming gas station lands, and I appreciate all your time and effort. We went into it with the meetings we had, and I think it's great, you know, we're not against gas stations in Kenner, but we'd like to be able to regulate, you know, where they are, and they're, we don't want them all lined up, you know, down in Williams, and to protect the look and the essence of what we do. So thank you so much for doing this, and I'm definitely going to support this.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Chris, thank you for meeting with me on this. I was really kind of hoping also that they would have put the tire shops into it because, you know, we just have so many. They're just all over. So maybe we'll get back to that also.
Yeah, we can, we could definitely look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunn. Anybody else? No? Next change?
All right. So change number six, revises the language regarding window signs to clarify how non-illuminated signs are regulated. So this came out of code enforcement. Basically, they had made a determination on how they were regulating window signs, but the language wasn't terribly clear, and so we revised the language just to make it more self-explanatory to anyone reading the, the language, you know, that portion of the UDC. It makes it so that any sign in a window is basically regulated exactly the same, and it's all taken into account for the total area of signage that a building is allowed to have. That would prevent, like, if a business had four windows across the front, they couldn't, you know, stick a giant sign that filled the whole window and blocked it out. So that's really all that's doing.
Any questions on this one? Dunn?
I do.
Okay. Councilman Lahat?
So the regulation would not allow the entire window to take up of a sticker or, we have that at a couple of stores I don't want to mention right now, but it's going to stop that from going forward, and that's going to clarify code and how they can deal with that? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Next change?
All right. So the final change, change number seven. We made exceptions to what can go into the required front yard. There's two different changes. As planning director, I oversee the Board of Zoning Adjustments meetings, and one of the most common things we see is someone needs stairs to encroach into their required front yard, be that because the house has to be raised to meet the base flood elevation, or they're having it elevated, and it was built right up to the front, setback to begin with. Either way, going forward, this would make it so that if you built, had stairs that encroached into the required front yard, and they were open to the sky, they didn't have a, an awning or anything over, you would no longer be required to seek a variance for that. They would still need a variance if they wanted to put an awning over on it, but if it's just a case of the stairs going into the required front yard, they would no longer need a variance for that. The second part is any residential or commercial structure that needs to be retrofitted with a handicap ramp, and that handicap ramp would go into either the required side or front yard, they would not need a variance for that handicap ramp, because that just adds up to three months of time, you know, preventing that resident from, you know, having ingress and egress to their home or their business. We did include language, though, whereas once the ramp is no longer required, it would need to be removed since it does go into the required front yard.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, because that was one of the issues in my district, and it was just disheartening because of the person, you know, being in the handicap way. It was just taking too long for them to really have that done, so I'm for that.
Do you have anything else you want to add to this?
That's it for now.
Okay. And this, this all was approved by the planning department, correct?
It was approved by the planning commission, yes.
Okay. All right. Real good. No other questions? Thank, thank you. Appreciate it, Mrs. Slouenski. Anybody else from the public wishing to make comment on these? No? Madam Clark?
Seeing no further comment, I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, to close the public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. For approval, I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. For approval? Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 11- I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat to open the public hearing. All Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 11B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,846 and ordinance amending ordinance 11,062 adopted March 17, 2016 entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending and rezoning lot 28, square eight Hanson City subdivision, Kenner-Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, as shown on survey of RJ Fusler and Associates LLC dated March 3, 2025 from MU Mixed Use to R22 Family Residential and directing, authorizing, empowering the planning directive for the City of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the City of Kenner. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat to open the public hearing. All Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero and we have another presentation by the Planning Department.
Mrs. Slonsky?
All right. So, this is case Z225. The owners are Preston Witherspoon, Carolyn Witherspoon and Cynthia Daniels of Independence, Louisiana, and the applicant is Natasha Wright, also of Independence, Louisiana. The request here is to rezone lot 28, square eight Hanson City subdivision with the municipal address 310 Hanson Place from mixed use to R22 family residential. The reason for this request is so that we can, so that I can approve a simple re-subdivision of the two lots there. One of the lots, the one to the north, was already zoned R22 family residential and the one to the south was zoned mixed use. The reason for that is that the gentleman who lived in the house that is currently on the property, which was damaged by one of the forename stores that the restore program covers, they are going to come in and build him a brand new house. And in order to do that, we have to combine the two lots into a single lot and in order for me to approve that, I need to change the zoning on one to match the other. So, we are going to get rid of the mixed use zoning on the southern lot and change it to match the R2 zoning on the northern lot. The subject lot fronts Hanson Place and is generally bounded by Reverend Richard Wilson Drive to the south, Farr Avenue to the east and Fourth Street to the north. The lot currently has a storm damaged single family home on it. The applicant held their early neighborhood meeting on April 8 of this year at 310 Hanson Place and per the applicant's report, no one objected to the rezoning. All of the surrounding lots are zoned either R22 family residential, mixed use or special ordinance, but all of the lots are developed residentially. The properties to the east are zoned SO Special Ordinance under ordinance 10,175, which permits two family homes on the two lots covered by the ordinance. This particular area, this particular lot that we are rezoning has been designated under five different zoning categories since 1957. It started out as B1 Neighborhood Shopping. In 1972, it became C1 Neighborhood Commercial. In 1977, it became C1 SPO Neighborhood Commercial Special Plan Option. In 1982, the subject property was designated C1PO Neighborhood Commercial PUD Option. And then in March 2016, when the UDC was adopted, it became mixed use. The proposed change does, is consistent with the Pattern for Progress Future Land Use Plan, which designates the area for low-density residential development and the Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, I was at the neighborhood meeting for this. Actually, that picture doesn't do justice because the property was so messed up. It was really on the blight list. At this time, it's all toe down and toe up. So, I was appalled to find out that the property, it's on one lot, but it has two different zoning. So, we're just bringing this property to one zoning so they can tear it down and build a brand new structure. I wish the other picture was actually there, what it looks like today. So, the house itself is really on the blight list. So, while at the neighborhood meeting, nobody objected. The neighbors were there. They were all for it. So, nobody objected to us rezoning and making that lot one zoning instead of two. 25 feet of it was R2 and 25 feet was MU. I've never heard of that, but that's what it was. So, we're just bringing this into compliance. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Oh, no. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Slonsky. Anybody else from the public wish to make comment? No? Madam Clark?
Seeing no further comment, I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat to close your public hearing. All Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat for approval. Any further discussion?
None.
Seeing none, all Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by Councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution approving the restoration of a non-conforming use for Nathan Broad at 2114 and 2116 Ninth Street. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 13B is a resolution approving the restoration of a non-conforming use for Roland Richberg at 1516 Lloyd Price Avenue. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 13C is a resolution accepting for maintenance the streets and street lighting of Seton Park subdivision. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion?
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. I'm just asking for support on this. This is the old St. Elizabeth school site that has been, the streets have been put in and the lights and everything have been put up, are brought up to what the city has required in order to, to take over the maintenance of that and I ask for your assistance and your vote for approval. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 13C is a resolution accepting for maintenance the streets and street lighting of Seton Park subdivision. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion?
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. I'm just asking for support on this. This is the old St. Elizabeth school site that has been, the streets have been put in and the lights and everything have been put up, are brought up to what the city has required in order to, to take over the maintenance of that and I ask for your assistance and your vote for approval. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,867 and ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing state contract number 4400032301 with the Han Company to purchase office furniture and other related items through Louisiana Office Products Incorporated on an as-needed basis not to exceed $100,000 annually for the Department of Finance. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,868 and ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing state contract number 4400028713 with Independent Suppliers Group Incorporated to purchase office supplies and other related items through Louisiana Office Products Incorporated on an as-needed basis not to exceed $125,000 annually for the Department of Finance. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Seeing no discussion, all Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,869 and ordinance authorizing the purchase agreement with PNC Equipment Finance LLC for one Pierce Custom Saber FR pumper for the Kenner Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Any discussion?
Chief, if you can, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just give us an explanation.
This is one of the pumpers that we ordered. This is the pumper we ordered. It's a pre-bill. We had to sign the contract to purchase it in order to put it in line for us to purchase once it was built. It's not a custom-built pump, but it's one that they designed and was planning on building anyway. So, we signed the agreement to it. Now, this is just a formalized agreement that we intend to purchase it.
Now, we have another one in 15D.
That's the one to pay for.
I'm sorry?
That's the one to pay for.
Okay.
That's the financing for it.
So, this one?
One side is saying we purchasing it.
Okay.
The other one pays. The financing.
Okay. That clarifies it. Very good. And that's a piece of equipment I'm sure that we long needed and-
Yes, sir.
Yeah, very good. So, it helps replace some old equipment or is it add to?
No, it replaces an older piece of equipment.
Okay.
An old apparatus.
Very good. Very good. Any questions? Seeing none.
All Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,870 and ordinance authorizing the purchase of one Pierce Custom Saber FR pumper from Sidens Martin Emergency Group LLC in accordance with LAMAS contract number 4400017741 in the amount of $879,819.20 for the Kenner Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Seeing no further discussion, Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,871 and ordinance accepting the proposal received from Lamarck Ford to furnish two used vehicles in the amount of $46,311 for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion?
Chief Connolly, if you will.
Yeah, basically, we needed vehicles, one for crime scene, one for the executive staff. So, we looked around at the used cars, did their proposals in accordance with state law and we got two vehicles for about $43,000. So, we, you know, we've kind of shifted to used vehicles to supplement our fleet. You know, we get them checked by the mechanics to make sure they mechanically sound. So, we're satisfied with these vehicles and think we got a pretty good deal.
Very good. Any questions? No?
Seeing none, all Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,872 and ordinance approving an agreement for capital outlay funding services with Pivotal GR Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $70,000 for the legal department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion?
Eric, if you will. This is for the legal department?
This is just pivotal. They do general lobbying for capital outlay in particular, so.
Say again?
They do lobbying for capital outlay in Baton Rouge.
Okay.
Yeah. They've been a longtime vendor for us.
Okay. Any questions? No? We're good.
All Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,873 and ordinance approving a professional services agreement with LeBlanc Fantasi Vilio LLC for legal services in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for the city attorney's office. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Any discussion?
Ms. Herring, is that the typical amount that we've been doing?
Yes. So, it's a 300,000 is what we've been doing. This contract started in 2022. They've been with us much longer than that, but this contract and we've spent about 598,000 over the last three years.
Three years. Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Teft, please state your name and address for the record.
Greg Teft, 5th District. I am opposed to this and my reasoning is very simple. We, we have a legal department and based on what I read that the firm would be handling for us, I would think that our current legal department and our current city attorney is more than enough to handle and to litigate any cases or take care of anything that falls within those categories. To spend 300,000 for attorney when we have an in-house department, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense when we have other pressing issues that we could use that money for. So, so, all I'm asking y'all to do is consider that why would we need an outside legal firm to handle what our staff, which is very versed in city issues, state issues and parish issues? And it just doesn't make sense to layer in another $300,000 if you don't have to and use that money in a better place. So, I would ask y'all to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Chief Connolly?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, Mr. Teft, that the city attorney's office, we rely on them, is the police department heavily for, you know, a lot of our legal needs and cases and they're very successful in handling our cases, but this firm in particular has an expertise in law enforcement liability cases that are federal nature, would take a lot of manpower, a lot of resources, especially on a federal level. So, this is a not-to-exceed amount. I think we might have one case, two cases with them right now, but just to set your mind at ease, the legal department here is relied on, at least by my department and I know by city departments, quite heavily and it does, you know, take a lot of the load off of us financially, but there are some times when we do need to call up a firm like this for a specialty as any city does or any municipality or parish does. I know the parish of Jefferson also has several law firms and they have one of the largest parish attorney's offices in the state, but you can't get away from certain types of defenses that are necessary.
Anyone else make, want to make comment? No? No? Madam Clark?
Seeing no further discussion, all Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15H is summary ordinance number 13,874 and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Armstrong Supply Company Incorporated to provide electrical supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid 25-6900 in an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Seeing no discussion, Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15I is summary ordinance number 13,875 and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Adacafa Services LLC to provide emergency cleaning and flushing of subsurface drain lines and drainage structures post-disaster on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid 25-6898 in an amount not to exceed $200,000 annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Any comments? No comments? This is post-disaster, everyone. This is something that we had to have on the back end in case we do have a storm. So, we have a backup contract in place. Am I correct on that, Jose?
Correct. And that, and that we all offer fee by reimbursement was this contract would be difficult to give reimbursement.
Thank you. That's it? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. All Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item 15J is summary ordinance number 13,876 and ordinance approving a professional services agreement with the firm of Meyer Engineers LTD regarding professional architectural and engineering services associated with the design, construction, administration and supplementary services related to a new city hall complex, Phase 1 evaluation phase, in an amount not to exceed $104,750 for the Kenner Mayor's Office. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Dunn.
Ms. Gonzalez, if we have like a timeline of what we expect on this at this point?
This would be the first phase, okay, towards the reconstruction of the new city
This is just, uh, pivotal, they do, uh, general lobbying for capital outlay in particular, so.
Say again?
They do lobbying for, uh, capital outlay in Baton Rouge.
Okay, okay.
They've been a longtime vendor for us.
Okay. Any questions? No, we're good.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-three, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with LeBlanc Fantasi Vilio LLC for legal services in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars for the city attorney's office. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahatt, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Any discussion?
Ms. Herring, is that the typical amount that we've been doing?
Yes, so it's a three hundred thousand is what we've been doing. Um, this contract started in twenty twenty-two, they've been with us much longer than that, but this, um, contract, and we've spent about five hundred and ninety-eight thousand over the last three years.
Three years, okay. Any questions?
Mr. Teft, please state your name and address for the record.
Greg Teft, Fifth District. Uh, I am opposed to this, and my reasoning is very simple. We, we have a legal department, and based on what I read, that the firm would be handling for us, I would think that our current legal department and our current city attorney is, is more than enough to handle and to litigate any cases or take care of anything that falls within those categories. To spend three hundred thousand, uh, for attorney when we have an in-house department, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense when we have other pressing issues that we could use that money for. So, so all I'm asking y'all to do is consider that, why would we need an outside legal firm to handle what our staff, which is very versed in city issues, state issues, and parish issues? And it just doesn't make sense to layer in another three hundred thousand dollars if you don't have to and use that money in a better place. So I, I would ask y'all to vote against this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Chief Connolly?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, Mr. Teft, that, um, the city attorney's office, we rely on them, is the police department heavily for, um, you know, a lot of our legal, uh, needs and cases, and they, they're very successful, uh, in handling our cases. But, uh, this firm in particular has an expertise in law enforcement liability cases that are federal nature, would take a lot of manpower, a lot of resources, especially on a federal level. So this is a not-to-exceed amount, I think we might have one case, two cases with them right now. But, um, just to, to set your mind at ease, uh, the legal department here is relied on, at least by my department and I know by city departments, quite heavily. And it does, um, you know, take a lot of the, the load off of us financially. But there are some times when we do need to, to call up a firm like this for a specialty, as any, uh, city does, or any municipality or parish does. I know the Parish of Jefferson also has several law firms, and they have one of the largest, uh, parish attorney's offices in the state, but you can't get away from certain types of, um, defenses that, that are necessary.
Anyone else make the, want to make comment? No? No? Madam Clark?
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-four, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Armstrong Supply Company Incorporated to provide electrical supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine hundred in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-five, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Adacafa Services LLC to provide emergency cleaning and flushing of subsurface drain lines and drainage structures post-disaster on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight ninety-eight in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Any comments? No comments? This is post-disaster, everyone, this is something that we had to have on the back end in case we do have a storm, so we have, uh, a backup contract in place. Am I correct on that, Jose?
Correct, and that, and that we all offer free reimbursement. With, uh, this contract, it will be different with the other reimbursement.
Thank you. That's it, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-six, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with the firm of Meyer Engineers LTD in regarding professional architectural and engineering services associated with the design, construction, administration, and supplementary services related to a new city hall complex, Phase One Evaluation Phase, in an amount not to exceed a hundred and four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for the Kenner Mayor's Office. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Dunn.
Mr. Gonzalez, if we have, uh, like a timeline of what we expect on this at this point?
This would be the first phase, okay, towards the reconstruction of the new city hall complex. By adopting this particular ordinance, we would be selecting an architect to start evaluating the site to determine whether we would need one building versus two buildings, locations of buildings, ingress and egress to the site, infrastructure needs, preparations of rendering for public presentation, and a number of other tasks. This is, this would be just Phase One, an evaluation phase. Once this phase, evaluation phase is completed, we will do an amendment to this contract and proceed with the, the sign of a new city hall complex. Uh, as far as the evaluation phase, I believe that it will probably take five months to complete. At that point in time, I think we can come back to the council and to the general public and offer renderings and offer a presentation.
So how?
There will be options, there will be a number of options as far as location of buildings and ingress and egress, one building versus two buildings, many options.
And we should have some public meetings?
Yes. Yeah, but once we finish the evaluation phase, it's too early for a presentation right now, it's too early for public meetings.
Okay, is there any projection, is, is a building site in date or?
Well, we gotta go through an evaluation phase, that's a necessity.
Okay.
Okay, and, and that will roughly take five months. And then we gotta go through public meetings, presentations, and we want everybody's on board as to what the site is gonna look like, one building versus two buildings, number of stories, what departments will go in those buildings, and then we'll be in a better position to proceed with Phase Two, which is the actual design.
Real good, thank you for that, anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, so in other words, this is kind of like before the architect can actually come in and build on the site, they need to know what they're bidding on, so.
We need to know what are we gonna be designing for, that is gonna be agreeable to the council and is gonna be agreeable to the general public. At, at such time, once we come to an agreement, we would have an idea as to how much the project is gonna cost and how much it would cost to design the project. So we would have to do an amendment to this contract to proceed with the design phase.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions?
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Advanced Industrial Products Incorporated to purchase T-Sirumi pumps and flange adapters in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash thirty twenty-one in an amount not, in an amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Lahatt. Any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the Fairbanks Morse twenty-inch VTSH pump at the Four MGD Sewer Lift Station by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC in the amount of eighty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for the wastewater department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen M is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine, an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with Prince Dump Truck Services LLC for work relating to clearing and grubbing of land, grading slash spreading of materials, and excavation on an as-needed basis to increase the agreement amount by fifty thousand dollars annually for a new not-to-exceed total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually for various city departments. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen N is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Appack Construction Group LLC to remove, furnish, and install gutters at the Adult Gym located at number two Furman Drive in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one seventy-four in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Uh, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen O is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-one, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Appack Construction Group LLC to remove, furnish, and install gutters at Fleet Management in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one seventy-five in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the General Services Department. Please note, there was a typographical error, there is no Adult Gym at Fleet Management. These gutters will go in at the Fleet Management location, I apologize. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen P is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Ennis Stash-Flint Incorporated to supply thermoplastic pavement markings in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight ninety-five in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen Q is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-three, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Black Star Diversified Enterprises to supply traffic signal parts on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh four in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahatt, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen R is a resolution accepting as complete the agreement with Pilot Construction and Maintenance Incorporated dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five to remove, furnish, and install two fountains at Kenner City Park for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item sixteen A is an ordinance authorizing the use of State of Louisiana contract four four zero 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 three two six zero seven with Genuine Auto Parts Company doing business as NAPA Auto Parts for the purchase of automotive parts on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Fleet Management Department. Item sixteen B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from DOM Development Corporation to provide carpentry services, labor only, as needed in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh two in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. Item sixteen C is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of fire engine three ninety-eight located at four hundred Vintage Drive by Industrial Fire and Apparatus LLC in the amount of forty-two thousand four hundred and two dollars and eighty-two cents for the Kenner Fire Department. Item sixteen D is an ordinance approving the use of state contract four four zero 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 three one seven five zero with Precision Delta Corporation for the purchase of various types of ammunition on an as-needed basis at a cost not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen E is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement for the donation of a Luna playset by Thomas and Jean Brett to be installed by Pelican Playgrounds LLC at the Rivertown Science Center. Item sixteen F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from the Sound Source LLC to furnish and install new PA system at Musburgerlino Football Stadium in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one sixty-nine in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents for the Parks and Recreation Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with Simsco Incorporated to provide valves on an as-needed basis to increase the not-to-exceed amount of seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen H is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from FMF Group LLC to provide concrete flatwork services on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh three in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen I is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice, Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, award number twenty twenty-four dash VA dash zero one dash eighty-five eighty-five in the amount of forty thousand dollars with the City of Kenner match amount of ten thousand dollars for child abuse program for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen J is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice, Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, award number twenty twenty-four dash WF dash zero one dash eighty-six forty in the amount of fifty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars with the City of Kenner match amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars for S T O P Violence Against Women Investigations for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen K is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice, Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, award number twenty twenty-four dash VA dash zero one dash eight five eight three in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with the City of Kenner match amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a victim assistance program for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen L is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Project One Developments LLC for foundation repair at forty-three twelve Florida Avenue Hispanic Resource Center in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one seventy in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the Community Development Department. Item sixteen M is an ordinance approving an agreement for professional architectural and engineering services pursuant to SOQ dash two five dash six nine oh five related to the construction of a new resource facility to replace the former Arthur P. Clay Resource Center for the Department of Federal Program Compliance. Item sixteen N is an ordinance approving an agreement with Parish Engineering LLC for professional architectural and engineering services pursuant to SOQ dash two five dash six nine oh six relating, related to the installation of a generator at the Kenner Food Bank for the Department of Federal Program Compliance. Item sixteen O is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with DOM Development Corporation to provide carpentry services, labor only, to increase the agreement amount by a hundred thousand dollars annually for a total not-to-exceed amount of three hundred thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. Item sixteen P is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Innovative Flow Solutions Incorporated to purchase ten wet well mixer systems in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh eight in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen Q is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Grow Environmental and Construction LLC for the Wood Lake Playground Concession build and demolition in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh seven in an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department. Item sixteen R is an ordinance amending Chapter Five, Article Four of the Code of Ordinances to make needed adjustments to the Kenner Flood Ordinance. Item sixteen S is an ordinance amending the City of Kenner Code of Ordinances, Chapter Ten, Article Ten, Section Ten dash two hundred to amend the definition of public gathering and to add regulations for private events. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Anyone? None.
Seeing none, item eighteen is new business, we have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider are removed from a tabled position, we have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
I have Mr. Greg Teft, if he's still here? Yes, sir. District or address?
Uh, Greg Teft, Fifth District. I, I just have just a couple of comments. One of them is that, uh, we, I've noticed that we're getting better about cleaning up the trash that's been going, you know, been thrown around on the mediums and on the streets and in the parks. The only thing I want to come forward with is that if, if at some point we can get to the, to the point where instead of a resident having to call to report these things, that as city officials or city employees drive by these places, that they can make a note and turn it in as well. I will say that when, when a resident calls, they act on it real quick, and that's a good thing. But the idea is, you know, we got a reputation with the city police and our fire department getting things done. All we gotta do is clean up the city and we'll be that much better and that much more ahead and, and make the city more applicable for people to move in, because I know that's the object. And, and that's what these new apartments on Laola is meant for, is to bring new residents in and add to the sales tax within the city. I want to also congratulate Council President Wilmot for the, for his position.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I know you know what to do and how to run it, and you've called me down plenty of times, so you got it straight. And then I, I just want to say that, again, I want to just emphasize that what I'm hearing in the streets and hearing in surrounding parishes is that you don't come to Kenner and mess around. And I, and that's a good thing. Because years ago, when I first moved here, people would not date my daughter that lived out of Kenner for fear that they was going to get in trouble when they come in Kenner. And I thought that was a good thing. And then we kind of slipped away, but now we back to that. And of course, we do have a top-rate fire department that's second to none, and we just gotta hold on to those good people and keep it going. And I think that Kenner has a, a good direction if we just follow through and make some simple adjustments to take, to be more proactive in cleaning it up, then we might start attracting other families into the city. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Teft. Anybody else have any comments before we adjourn? Anyone? Anybody from the public? No? I'll entertain a motion. We're adjourned.